Board of Education meeting 1587 is now called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Andrew.
Second.
Megan, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And at this time, I would like to invite Henry and Claire, our students from Dressel Elementary, if you would like to come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And everyone else, if you could please stand for the pledge. Tonight, we are recognizing Dressel Elementary, and I will turn it over to Pat Shonake, Principal of Dressel Elementary, to present our recognitions this evening.
All right, welcome. Good evening. I'm thrilled to be here today to represent all of the students and staff at Dressel. We get to honor some students and some staff members tonight. So first, I'm going to go ahead and call up Claire Bailey, our fourth grade student. Come on up, Claire. So a few kind words by your teacher. Claire Bailey is a shining example of an eager self-starter with a heart of gold. Her kindness and willingness to lend a helping hand to her peers makes her an invaluable asset to Dressel Elementary. Notably, Claire, along with her family, takes on the responsibility of delivering the morning announcements where they seamlessly incorporate science and history, making the daily routine an educational experience for all. If you haven't checked it out, you've got to get on our Facebook page. It's like a production. It's awesome. Claire is well-spoken, outgoing, and consistently gives her best effort in everything she takes on, making it a true honor to have her represent Dressel Elementary. Her dedication and passion for learning and helping others makes her an exceptional role model and inspiration for all of us. Congratulations, Claire. Stay here. We've got something for you.
We're going to have a certificate for you, recognizing you as Student of the Month. So congratulations. Yes, and then can't have enough Lindbergh swag, right? So here's a T-shirt for you as well. So there's that, and we're going to step over this way. We're going to get a picture from the plane and arch right here. We'll have you be in the middle right here. Perfect.
All right, next is Henry. Come on down, Henry. All right, a few kind words from your teacher, Ms. Schaefer. So Henry works hard at everything that he does. He is a goal setter and a goal getter. Henry loves to learn and to be challenged in his learning. His creative thinking and ability to communicate clearly have helped him be successful at a high level. The best part of Henry is his kind heart, patience, and compassion he shows to everyone around him. He is a great example to his peers and other students at Dressel. Congratulations.
Henry, we also have a certificate for you, recognizing you as Student of the Month. So there's that for you, and we also have a T-shirt for you as well. So congratulations.
All right, the two staff members we'd like to honor. First, she's not here. She has left the district to go and to aspire to her educational dream. She's an assistant principal now in another district. But Brandy Koppel, I can't, I have to mention her just because she was such an outstanding teacher. She was also our District Teacher of the Year, so we wish her well in her new adventure. Lastly, our Support Staff of the Year is Lisa Billerbeck. So Lisa, come on down. So a few words from the staff at Dressel about you, Lisa. So Lisa has been the Dressel Nurse Assistant since we opened seven years ago. She consistently exceeds the expectations of our Dressel teachers, parents, and students, all of whom benefit from her caring nature. While some people might crumble under the constant pressure of taking care of sick or injured children, Lisa handles problems with ease. Being a school nurse is an extremely stressful and demanding role, yet we have Lisa, a true hero who cares for our Dressel students with compassion and tender-hearted love. One thing Lisa will never ask for is public recognition for her hard work, but that is exactly what she deserves. Without Lisa doing her job to the highest standard she expects of herself, Dressel students and staff wouldn't be able to do their job to the full extent. Congratulations, Lisa, on this great honor.
We have 4.03, another special recognition with Biz Savers Incentive Program. Joelle?
I want to welcome up two gentlemen from Amaran, and I want to say, finally get to meet them in person. It's been four years that we've been working through a process that on April 2nd, when we passed the bond issue in 2019, just a couple months later, we started talking about, we knew all the improvements, especially at the high school, were going to be big energy savings from replacing HVAC equipment that, you know, was outdated. And there was a lot, he's going to tell you the deets on that, but... So we put a rebate application in, and we've been working on it back and forth over the last four years. And gentlemen, I'll let you talk about the program.
So good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Farbegan. I'm with the Amaran Missouri Biz Savers Program. As Joelle mentioned, we pay cash incentives for making energy-efficient upgrades. I am a born and raised mobile panther, so please don't hold that against me. But I'm more than happy to assist Lindbergh schools with becoming more energy-efficient. Since the program started in 2009, Lindbergh has completed 13 projects that have received incentives. Those 13 projects total $4,51,224 kilowatt-hours. To put that in perspective, the average US home uses about 10,000 kilowatt-hours, so that's the equivalent of taking 405 homes off the grid and never having them use electricity again. So very impactful. And then those savings resulted in $686,903 in incentives from Biz Savers, and then it saves the district roughly $325,000 annually in electric costs. So again, very, very impactful. And then most recently, the district completed two very substantial projects at Lindbergh High School. The updates included updating existing equipment and installing new energy-efficient equipment with the new expansion. The projects included getting rid of old inefficient fluorescent lighting with new LED lighting, adding daylight dimming and occupancy sensors to the hallways, classrooms, offices, and other smaller areas of the building. In addition to the lighting upgrades, Lindbergh High School also upgraded to energy-efficient -- Kyle might help me out with this -- chillers, basically cooling system. We won't bore you with the details on that, but very impactful. So that project alone saved $3,602,403 kilowatt-hours annually and had a combined incentive value of $616,650. So a major part of our program is developing energy calculations to prove where that energy is being saved, and none of that would have been possible without Kyle. Kyle's with McClure Engineering, and his team did a great job of capturing those energy savings, and none of this incentive money and savings would have been possible without all their hard work. So we look forward to working with McClure and the district on your journey to become more efficient, and thank you for participating in the program.
And at this time, we can take a short break so that everyone who is here for recognitions can go ahead and leave if they don't want to stay for the business portion of the meeting. And I believe the board will be taking our picture.
Yes.
For national educators. 5.0 consent resolutions, there are none this evening. We will move to 6.0 citizen communication regarding agenda items. We have one this evening. Mrs. Sauer, it's on item 9.10, the audit. So you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
The previous superintendent recognized the value of full disclosure and had this information I'm going to talk about, had this information I'm going to talk about in his annual financials. This stopped, though, with the current administration. With the passage of Prop R, our district approved $105 million in bonds. These bonds were issued at a premium. That means the district received $10 million more than the face value of the bonds, a total of $115 million. About five months later, the district issued a type of debt called Certificates of Participation that provided just over $10 million for energy-efficient projects. These funds were held by a trustee, not in a district-owned bank account. And interestingly, the Amaran rep that was just here only mentioned energy projects of $4 million. Then again, five months later, in January 2022, more Certificates of Participation were issued for improvements at the high school that provided $12 million for projects and was also placed into a trustee account. Between the $10 million bond premium and the $12 million for improvements at the high school, it sure looks like the district is over budget by at least $22 million on Prop R. And we've got financials without a management discussion and no additional disclosures to show how the $22 million in Certificates of Participation affects our financial situation. Did you know the fees on these certificates were over $600,000 and that there are $30 million in liens on this very building plus assets at three elementary schools and Sperring Middle? Those $22 million in expenditures are not reported in the financials, nor are they approved by the board, because that certificate money went into a trustee account. It doesn't matter who technically owns the property. The taxpayers of this district are paying for this, and the board has a fiduciary responsibility to us. These certificates don't require voter approval, and it's a form of off-the-book spending that costs a lot of money and has encumbered district assets and needs to be properly disclosed. There is no mention which district fund makes the payments for these certificates. Are these payments why the CAPS program was abruptly canceled and students were left in the lurch? These certificate payments more than double beginning in 2028. How will that affect future budgets, programs, and pay increases for our teachers? And sadly, there's more. The expected cost of the energy projects, they exceeded the funds received from the certificates. So has the district used Prop R money for projects beyond those approved by the voters? And there is no management discussion regarding district savings versus the cost for this energy project. And with all this debt, there's no management discussion regarding the fact that our bond rating fell to AA and our debt rating fell to AA minus and what this means for the district. I had to get most of this information from third-party websites. You haven't made this public, so I prepared a public handout with all this information. If the board approves these financials, you will be withholding vital information from the public. So vote no tonight on the audit report, and please begin immediately to show that you have integrity and value us and our tax dollars, and get to work responding to the other documents I provided. A list of action items and a list of sunshine requests to restore trust and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will pass them out. We will move to 7.0 communications with our calendar events, Ms. Vetter.
Thank you. So some of the district events for this month are a reminder that district offices and schools are closed November 22nd through 24th. On November 27th, the Lindbergh High School Choir has a concert. Teaching and Learning Advisory Board will be on November 28th. November 29th is the Strolling Strings Open Dress Rehearsal, so make sure to check that out. The high school band concert is on November 30th. December 2nd is Special Education Day. December 5th is the Board of Education Candidate Filing, and that opens at the county office. And there is also an orchestra concert that night, again, December 5th. On December 6th, Sperring will have their band concerts. December 7th is the fifth-grade strings concert. December 11th is the Technology Advisory, and that meets later that evening, and the Truman and Sperring Choir concerts as well. Few more. December 12th is Truman and Sperring's orchestra concert, as well as the Fiddler's Concert. The Facilities Advisory will meet at 4:00 PM on December 13th, and Truman will have their band concerts later that evening. Lots of good concerts. Finance Advisory meets at 5:00 PM on December 14th, and all elementary string concerts are also that evening. Again, that's December 14th. And then we're back here for our regular board meeting on Tuesday, December 19th.
Thank you, Ms. Vetter. Now we will move to 7.02, Report of Meetings. Does anyone have state, parent group, or other meetings to report about? I know there were a few events this past month.
I think most of us attended the MSBA, which is Missouri School Board Association Conference, and this is a time where we visit with our peers, find out what they're doing in their districts. But then also, the Missouri School Board talks to us about their advocacy to Jefferson City and representatives there. My focus was on advocacy, and many districts are starting their own advocacy groups, not only to advocate for their schools, but also to advocate for public schools across Missouri. And there was some discussion about AI, which is starting to come into play for us in education. And does anybody else have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I'll jump in on that. The AI speaker did an amazing job at the conference, and then I was pleasantly surprised to come to the Technology Board Advisory, and then they had a, they were discussing AI as well here in our, and how it impacts our district. And it's really encouraging to see that we're looking at this massive movement and the way things are changing and making sure that we're doing everything we can to prepare our students for a world that, you know, the use of AI is going to be part of their everyday life. So it's exciting to see us looking forward and looking for how we can best use those tools, and I'm really excited about it.
I attended a session on, it was the financial, school finance section, but the one that they talked about that's the big talk is the new bill that has the taxes frozen for seniors and how that's going to be implemented. And it's interesting because there's not a whole lot of detail on how it's supposed to be implemented. It's county to county, so there's a lot of discussion on how this is actually going to happen, and there's some groups that think it's unconstitutional. So that will be interesting to see how it plays out, and I'm sure Joelle is on top of that and will provide us details when we have them on how the county is going to handle that.
Anyone else? All right, we will move to 7.03, Announcements. Ms. Vetter?
Yes, we do have an announcement. Filing for the Lindbergh Schools Board of Education election will begin on Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, at 8:00 AM and continue through Tuesday, December 26th, 2023, at 5:00 PM. Two positions are available for three-year terms. This, new this year that candidates must file in person at the St. Louis County Board of Elections Office. The address is 725 Northwest Plaza Drive, St. Anne, Missouri 63074. No filing will take place here at the district office. Candidates can file between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday. Filing ends at 5:00 PM on the last day of candidate filing only, which again is Tuesday, December 26th. The Board of Elections Office will be closed on December 7th and the 25th and may also close due to inclement weather. For the first day of filing, a lottery will be conducted to determine ballot placement. Candidates who file after the first day will be listed in order of filing.
Thank you. And then we have our review of upcoming Board of Education meeting agendas.
Last one. So we meet again on Tuesday, December 19th, at 7:00 PM for our regular meeting. Tentative agenda items are regular business items, policy, we have some second readings, the GEMP Commission's appointment, and Kennery Elementary is scheduled to be here for recognitions. These meetings are always open to the public, and patrons are encouraged to attend.
Thank you. 7.05, Board of Education member appointments, there are none this evening. We will move to 7.06, the MSBA November Board Report.
Welcome to the November edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with news from the state's top educational position. Missouri Education Commissioner Marjorie Van Deven announced that she is resigning effective July 1st, 2024. Van Deven informed the State Board of Education members during their October meeting. Dr. Van Deven has over 30 years of experience, including seven years as Missouri's Education Commissioner, serving from 2015 to 2017, then returning to the position in 2019.
I have worked for a Democratic governor, I have worked for a Republican governor, and I have found that when we focus on students, it should be a nonpartisan issue. As I mentioned, it's not the political choice, it's the right choice.
In a statement released that same day, MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall said, "Commissioner Van Deven's announcement of her resignation at the end of the fiscal year gives us pause to celebrate the work of a transformational leader whose dedication to Missouri's children has been unwavering and inspiring. She provided guidance and leadership to Missouri's K-12 systems during some of our state's most challenging times, staying laser-focused on ensuring a quality education for every child. The commissioner has been an outspoken advocate for our teachers and has promoted strong local governance and improved investments in programs to safeguard our children. We remain committed to continuing the legacy of excellence she has fostered and look forward to working with her until her departure next year." For the past few years, Missouri school districts have seen an influx of funding courtesy of the federal government's response to the pandemic and other sources. As a result, education budgets benefited, offering support to districts across the state. MSBA Senior Finance Director Linda Quinley says that as some of that funding goes away, it's important for district leaders and communities to recognize and address the inevitable challenges ahead.
We are growing more and more concerned about the fiscal funding cliff that we know we've all been watching for but is now actually here. We are looking at the end of our SRF funds. We also know that the DESI waivers are coming to an end. And then we have state revenues down significantly because of the tax cuts from two years ago that are continuing to roll in year after year. We also know that the enrollment and attendance numbers have remained low, so collectively all of those things are going to impact the future opportunities for revenues for all of our schools across Missouri.
And it's never too early to start planning for your school district's next budget. Budget planning is a meticulous process that requires a thorough understanding of a school's financial needs, priorities, and constraints. A school finance webinar series hosted by Linda is starting at the end of this month. Get all of the school finance information you can use from the comfort of your home or office.
Our webinar series around budget planning and getting the budget to the finish line is really what we want to help people do, is intended for our brand-new finance leaders, whether they be superintendents, bookkeepers, finance officers. They're also intended for people who've been doing this work for a little while but want to figure out how to make their budget a more usable document for their board, their community, and their administration. So anyone who's involved in the budgeting process inside the district is welcome to participate in this and hopefully gain some insight, some tools, and some tips to really present a great budget to their board in the spring.
Topics include making and communicating the budget plan, projecting current year's actuals to springboard next year's budget, and more. Visit the MSBA website for dates for each meeting and registration information. And last, but certainly not least, thank you to all who hosted and attended MSBA's Fall Regional Meetings. Meetings were held in all of the state's 17 regions as attendees gathered to network, learn, and share with fellow public school leaders to ensure all students succeed. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in December for the next MSBA Board Report.
Thank you, Colin. 8.01 Cabinet Updates. We will begin with Dr. McKinney.
But we will meet in December. Short report for me. Thanks.
And Joelle.
Our facilities meeting is on December 13th, so we have not met for that yet, but that will be coming up after Thanksgiving break. This week, our Finance Committee did meet, and we had our auditor as a special guest at the meeting. So we have two board members that serve on that committee. Our auditor presented the audit in detail. The employees of the district, anybody who was employed, we all stepped out and let the board and our Finance Committee members, who are made up of finance specialists in our district, met with the auditor, I would say, for a little bit over 30 minutes, and then we came back in and talked about the items that were going to be on the meeting this week that related to finance, and it was a good meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. And Dr. Sparks.
Well, Andy gave it away earlier, talking about the Technology Board Advisory. So emerging technologies is a big topic for us in trying to develop guidelines about how we balance the opportunities that they bring for our students as well as student data privacy, which is always a concern when we're talking about technology. So some really good feedback on a draft document that we have that we'll continue to perfect over time and work with our teachers and our students on. In terms of teaching and learning board advisory, we really have a goal this year to focus on college and career readiness throughout the year. So at each meeting, we're also taking some time to give updates on the Success Ready Students Network. So we collected a lot of feedback from our parents and students on the advisory about what they know about college readiness, what they want to know more of about college readiness, and then the same for career readiness. And we're using that information. We're in the process, over the next couple of months, of developing our Success Ready Students Network dashboard. So how do the things that people say they want to know more about, how do we infuse that into the development of that system? And then finally, student life. Our focus this year is on transition support, so everything from early childhood into kindergarten, elementary into middle, middle to high, and then high school post-secondary also. So we started the first couple of meetings really focusing on what are people's dreams for how we would have transition support between each of those levels. And then between the previous two meetings, we got feedback from all of the buildings on what transition supports happen. So we've started to do a gap analysis between the dreams that we would like to have and what our reality is to see what recommendations we can make for the future. So again, that's going to be ongoing work throughout future meetings.
Thank you. And we have our student report, Adam.
All right, so this month is a little bit dense, so bear with me. To start off with some LHS recognitions, this past weekend, we had 43 Lindbergh students attend the Youth in Government Conference down in Jeff City. So they're debating in legislative sessions, participating in appellate-style judicial cases, and documenting this all through the media branch. And just some, there's so many things I could list about how amazing this conference was. I had the opportunity to attend, and it was a ton of fun, but some things that really stood out, we had two of the nine presiding officer seats. We had numerous individual awards, both in the media, judicial, and legislative branches. And then most excitingly, we had one student win the judicial trial for the entire state of Missouri of over 200 attorneys from delegations all across the state, and that was the first time it's ever happened in Lindbergh history, so that was super exciting. Our Scholar Bowl team recently attended the Missouri Fall Academic Tournament where they took first place after an undefeated streak, which will advance them to the Nationals Tournament later this year. Our math club recently participated in a math club competition, and one student got first in their age division and 10th overall in terms of publications. got first in their age division and 10th overall in terms of publications. Our publication staff at Lindbergh High School attended the Journalism Education Association's National Convention in Boston this year, and they took home top 10 in the Best in Show category for one of their spreads, which is also super exciting. I'm sure, as many of you heard, our boys' soccer team made it to the quarterfinals. So definitely show up to that game if you guys are free. I think they're going against Park Hill South, so hopefully make it to finals this year. I think I was talking to our gifted, or Honors Coordinator today, and she says, "I don't think that they've made it that far since her freshman year when she went to Lindbergh." So that was really exciting to hear about. Our cross-country team, we had two students qualify for the state tournament, and one of the students actually broke the school record for a 5K run at the state tournament, which is amazing, and I love to see it. Our boys' swim team had numerous individuals attend the state conference. Our orchestra students recently competed for a place on the District 5 Orchestra for the state. And we had over 15 spots filled, which was, I think, more than double any other school in the region. And then our band had 18 students qualify for the All Suburban Concert and Jazz Bands, and they placed 14th at the Bands of America Regional Competition, making it the second year in a row that's happened. In terms of some upcoming events, tomorrow we have a Shakespeare performance at the high school. I know people are super excited about that and super excited to use the new auditorium once again. So definitely show up to that if you are free. And then our Hosted Chapter, which is for future health professionals, is hosting a mini Met Academy, just to give parents some time off to do errand shopping, holiday shopping, or really just get some time off from their kids while also engaging them in some different medical-oriented activities. Like, I know they're having a flower dissection, for example, which should be super exciting. And then just a quick update for my Board Advisory, we met with Dressel this past week, and they talked a lot about their community, how Dressel makes it very inclusive, and how high-quality teachers and staff really helped develop that, which I know aligns a lot of our district goals. So I definitely like to hear that. And a more in-depth summary of those conversations were provided in last week's Friday packet, I believe, and we'll have an even more depth one for some of our administrators. So that's it for me.
I apologize. The mute button is on. You saw me hit it. I don't know what's going on. So, all right. My phone wasn't ringing. That I know how to control.
Real quick, Jen, real quick, there's one more that I wanted to throw out. The ribbon cutting for the Idea Center was this past week. And being in that space and watching the students in that space and watching all of the excitement and just, it was a really neat experience just to watch the kids move in that area and how the staff was working with them. And it was just neat to see. So I wanted to make sure we called that out as well.
Yeah, it was great. Thank you. We'll move to 9.0, Action Items by Consent. We have Action Items by Consent 9.01 to 9.10 this evening. Does anyone wish to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve Consent Items 9.01 to 9.10?
So moved.
Motion by Matt.
Second.
Second by Andrew. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I don't have a question, but, well, I kind of have a question, but a comment on the school calendar. And I've not been on the committee for a few, couple of years, but I'm sure we look at what days the students don't show up, like, what's a similar day? And happy to see on the calendar, the day after Halloween is off next year.
That's been a popular point of discussion today.
And I don't know why that's such a big day, but the kids just don't want to go. And I felt so bad for the teachers because they're up and they have kids and all of that. And then also, reading through the audit and having sat in the committee meeting for finance, it was awesome to hear how they really dive into the books, and they uncover and do deep dives and look for pieces of paperwork, pieces of paper, and ask our, Joelle's team, to provide those pieces of paper. And if we don't have those pieces of paper, where are those pieces of papers? They do a very deep dive. Our, I believe it's Kevin, is that right? Keith? Keith, yeah. I was close. It was a K name. He even talked about the fact that some accounting firms or auditing firms use AI or use a robot or electronic system to look through the books, and we do not. That's not what our firm does. So I was very impressed by that. And I just wanted to share that with everyone.
Anyone else? All right. We have a motion by Matt and a second by Andrew. We'll move to our vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We have no individual action items this evening, so we will move to reports. 11.01 for the record. We have two. There are Parents' Teachers PAT Program Evaluation and the ECE Curriculum First Reading. Upon review, if you have any questions, you can contact Dr. Sparks. ECE curriculum will be brought back to future meetings seeking approval. 11.03, Review of Board Policies, FEB and KK First Reading. Upon review of these policies, questions should be directed to Joelle Scheible and Dr. Brian McKenney. These policies will be brought back next month seeking approval. 11.04, There are no Resident Initiated Agenda Items. As we already conducted our executive session, there is no need to move to 14-point, there is no, I'm sorry, no need to conduct our executive session, and we will move to 14.0 Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Meeting 1587? So moved. Motion by Julia.
Second.
Second by Megan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Board Meeting 15-